Can I get a motion to adjourn from executive session and return to regular business?
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. All right, number eight is public hearing. It's the final adoption of ordinance twenty-five dash zero five. You guys good? Everybody's good? All right. At a regular meeting held on June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, we introduced the first reading the following ordinance which was advertised in New Jersey Herald, issue of July second, twenty-twenty-five, together with a notice of public hearing setting would be held at this meeting at six P M. This Capitol ordinance providing for various roadways and bridge improvements in and for the county of Sussex, state of New Jersey, and appropriating the sum of four million six hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars from the county's New Jersey Department of Transportation grant to pay for the cost thereof. Motion not to public hearing be opened.
So moved.
Sorry. Commissioner Henderson moves. Deputy Director Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Is there anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? All right, seeing there's no one, motion not to public hearing be closed.
So moved.
Commissioner DeGroot.
Second.
Deputy Director Space, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Can I get a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted?
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. I get a motion that this resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the county administrative center.
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson, have a second.
Second.
Deputy Director Space, any discussion? Roll call please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent.
Number nine, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please don't open the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comments.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, Commissioner DeGroot seconds, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. The floor is open on agenda topics.
Good evening, Ken Collins, Andover Township. This is regarding Agenda Item Eighteen, personnel where once again, I do not see the resignation of Commissioner Hayden, which I would expect immediately after his indictment. It should be tonight. So I'm here to ask for his resignation. You're welcome.
Anyone else on agenda topics only? Okay. Motion to close the floor for public comments.
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner DeGroot seconds, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Number ten, Commissioner comments, we'll start with Commissioner Henderson.
Okay, on July tenth, I attended the Sussex County Water Pack meeting where discussion and presentation was given regarding the expansion of Vernon Sewer Treatment Area. This application now goes before the SCUMA Board for their approval and finally back to our Board here for approval. On July fourteenth, I attended the Vernon Township Council Meeting as their liaison where there were several discussions regarding various topics. Vernon meetings are also live aired if anybody's interested in watching them. On July sixteenth, I attended the Sussex County M U A meeting where one of our employees, Ed Lyons, was honored by the Chapel of Four Chaplains in Philadelphia, P A, with a lifesaving award for saving a child that made its way out into a four-lane highway. Mr. Lyons was awarded the Honor Pin and the Charles W D Junior Lifesaving Gold Medalion Award on June twelfth. I think we're all lucky to live here in Sussex County where someone's always willing to lend a hand. On July twenty-first, Commissioner DeGroot and I attended a quarterly meeting at the Sussex County Community College with Dr. Homer and Sussex County Board Chairman Herb Yardley. Commissioner DeGroot will report on that in his remarks during the, regarding our meeting. Also on July twenty-first, I attended the Hamburg Council Meeting. Unfortunately, I was a week too early for their meeting, but I had the pleasure of speaking with a historian for about thirty-five minutes in a parking lot about the history of Hamburg. As I said in the past, I'm trying to reach every municipality in the county and I will certainly say it's a juggling act with dates. Finally, as I reported at the last meeting, I was going to visit the Leroy Smith Public Complex in Newark, New Jersey, a former Essex County Jail that's been renovated into office spaces. I'd like to thank John Warnock, a former Essex County Sheriff's Officer, for arranging the visit. We spent well over three and a half hours touring this thirteen-story building. The hospitality shown by Phil Elijah, Chief of Exec, Chief of Staff or Executive Director, and I'm going to mess his name up, I know he will, Joe D. Van Chasio. And the others were beyond words. As I say, they toured us on every floor of this building. What I found very ironic is at the end of the tour, they asked me if I could tell them anything about the Sussex County Fair. I guess I was in the right spot at the right time as a former president. I invited them to attend our fair and told them I would give them the personal tour they gave me at their jail facility. As they say, a picture's worth a thousand words. I prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation to share with the Board and all of you tonight, and I encourage every member of this Board to visit the Essex County Jail site to see the opportunities our jail has in our own county. I am a strong advocate against not selling our county jail. We're just going to walk you through a couple of slides here. This is the front of the building that was a former jail. I can tell you, you would never know it was a jail if you just click it for a go. This is the before and after of the lobby of the jail. I think what it shows there is it's absolutely incredible. It's not extravagant. It's not marble floors and granite. It is a practical building, which I think any taxpayer would accept the word practical. This is their exercise room before. Keep in mind, this is Essex County. This is what it is now. It is a totally empty room using by all different departments for training personnel or any type of county meeting. This floor was a floor that was where their furnaces and air conditioning duct was. Ceiling is low. I'm going to tell you, it was probably eight foot, I could touch the ceiling. They didn't feel it was high enough for office spaces, they turned it into storage and record retention. I know our record retention currently is in the basement of the Cochran Building. This is the before and after. There's the jail cells and that's the office space that that was transitioned into on the right-hand side. I guess it's my right-hand side looking out there. Quite a difference in a building. They left four jail cells intact. You can see three in the bottom, one on the top. The logic behind that was they have had movie productions come in and use those jail cells as movie scenes. The Sopranos have just done a shoot there and also, I'm going to date myself, I remember my kids and the Jersey Shore people. No, my kids did not, weren't allowed to watch that, but I do remember the name. They just did a photo shoot there as well with leaving the jails intact. And I will age myself, they're the Barney Fife cells. This is a single jail cell on the left. They knocked one wall out and turned it into an office. That is what the current office looks like now and that is two jail cells in one. This was after a fire that they had, the prisoners had set fire and the one on the right with the tarp in it, that's during the renovation of ripping out all their jail cells bars and everything to sell as scrap metal. This is our county jail. As you can see, pretty secure, plenty of razor ribbon, certainly plenty of wire. The gray you see in the front is a catwalk which goes from the courthouse to the jail. Essex County has the same thing except theirs is underground. This is what currently as of Monday, our main entrance to the jail looks. I see why they used to call it the Sussex Hilton. The floor is pretty damn shiny to this day. This is our exercise room that is not quite as big as theirs, but certainly an ample room for any type of training for any of our departments or anybody in the county. This is a two-story level look at our jail. And that is one jail cell as of Monday morning. That's what our jail cell looks like. I think the potential here is endless. As I say, I think a picture's worth a thousand words and that's why I brought this to all of you tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner DeGroot.
Yes, starting off with Sussex County Community College yesterday. Commissioner Henderson and I had the opportunity to meet with President Homer and Trustee Yardley for a quarterly update. I'm pleased to report that the college is trending in a positive direction with enrollment up from this time last year. Specifically, part-time enrollment has increased by forty-four more students or an eight-point-nine percent increase in full-time enrollment and is up by sixty-six more students or a six percent increase. We also received updates on several capital projects currently underway, including visible construction progress on the Optic Center, renovations to the Learning Commons and Library, upgrades to the art gallery, as well as the Adult Transition Center. In addition, coordination with Sussex Tech remains strong and I left the meeting feeling very optimistic about the future of our beloved community college. Next, Division of Senior Services. Next Senior Caregiver Support Group will be held virtually via Zoom on Thursday, August twenty-first, from two to three P M. This group offers important resources for caregivers, helping to reduce stress and improve physical and emotional well-being. Participants can learn about available programs, how to access them, and receive referrals if needed. To register or learn more, please contact the Division of Senior Services at nine-seven-three five-seven-nine oh-five-five-five, extension one-two-eight-eight. Sussex County Library System. The Sussex County Library System continues to innovate with its library of things, a unique collection of non-traditional items available to borrow with a library card. Whether you're planning a party, taking a trip, or exploring a new hobby, you could borrow everything from karaoke machines and projectors to V R headsets, sewing machines, and fishing poles. Items can be checked out for up to two weeks and cards are free to anyone who lives, works, or attends school in Sussex County, excluding Sparta. They have their own library. Also, don't miss the closing events for the twenty-twenty-five Summer Reading Program, Color Our World, happening Thursday through Saturday and starting in August, children's ages two to twelve can participate in the Reading Rocks Program. Visit sussexcountylibrary.org for full details. And finally, just some community highlights. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending the Lake Hopacon Foundation's annual gala. Fabulous time. As the largest lake in New Jersey, Lake Hopacon is a vital natural resource and major asset for Sussex County. Thank you to Marty, Kyle, Caitlin, and everyone involved for hosting a great event. And last night, I joined the Beamer Ville community in celebrating a hundred-and-twenty-five years of tradition at the Harvest Home Dinner, a beloved event that truly reflects the spirit of my hometown Wantage. Thank you to Beamer Ville Presbyterian Church for putting together such a memorable evening. That concludes my report. Thank you. God bless.
New Jersey State Fair, Sussex County Fairgrounds, Augusta, New Jersey, Friday, August first through Saturday, August ninth. The Division of Health, Senior Services, Social Services, Community and Youth Services, and the Office of Transit will be represented in the Sussex County Building at the New Jersey State Fair. Booth displays and giveaways will be available to Sussex County residents and visitors. Behind the scenes, environmental health staff will be completing the important task of inspecting and improving all food vendors at the fair to ensure the health and safety of the public. Medical Reserve Corps information and recruitment will be available in the county building on August first, five P M to eight P M, and on August fourth through August eighth, from three to six P M. Public Health Nursing will be offering free blood pressure screenings in the county building from twelve P M to eight P M on August fourth through August eighth. Skyland's Ride will be providing transportation to the fair. Individuals in need can call nine-seven-three five-seven-nine zero-four-eight-zero. Senior Day at the Fair will be held on Thursday, August seventh, from twelve to three, under the Planet Network's Performing Arts Tent at the Fairgrounds. Seniors will enjoy visiting numerous vendors to obtain important information about services while enjoying refreshments, door prizes, and listening to beach-themed music. Staff from the Divisions of Senior Services, Health, Social Services, Community and Youth Services, and the Office of Transit will be on-site to answer questions and provide valuable information and resources to seniors. The Sussex County Senior of the Year presentation will take place at one P M, which recognizes seniors in Sussex County who have been nominated for their accomplishments and outstanding service to the community. Immediately following this presentation, Sussex County Skyland's Ride bus drivers will be recognized for their years of safe driving. Green Day will take place on Monday, August fourth, in the Planet Network's Performing Arts Tent. The Office of Mosquito Control will be providing educational information on how mosquito control methods are environmentally friendly, such as the use of biocontrol practices. Children's Day will take place on Tuesday, August fifth, in the Planet Network's Performing Arts Tent. The Division of Health, the Office of Public Health Nursing will provide resources and information about special child health services and staff will host special education, special activities for children. The Office of Mosquito Control will provide educational activities for children of all ages. Division of Community and Youth Services will host a table with crafts and activities to promote social and emotional learning. Staff will provide parents and guardians with information about programs and services. Sussex County's Twelfth Annual Veterans Picnic, always a favorite of ours. The Division of Senior Services, Municipal Alliance, and the Veterans Committee will host the Twelfth Annual Veterans Picnic on Saturday, August sixteenth, from noon to three, at the Hamburg Fire Department Pavilion located off of Route twenty-three South in Hamburg. The picnic will include live music, giveaways, tables with veteran service information, and a homemade barbecue. Pre-registration is required for this event by August eleventh. For additional information and RSVP for the picnic, please contact the Division of Senior Services at nine-seven-three five-seven-nine zero-five-five-five, extension twelve-seventy-seven. Division of Health, Office of Public Health Nursing, a women's health screening clinic will be held on Thursday, August seventh, from four-thirty to seven-thirty at the Office of Public Health Nursing, two-oh-one Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg. This clinic offers a variety of health screenings and education. The service is free to uninsured and underinsured county residents who qualify for the New Jersey Cancer Education and Early Detection and J. Seed Program. To make an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at nine-seven-three five-seven-nine zero-five-seven-zero, extension twelve-seventy-five. Mosquito Control Program highlights, one aerial application of eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine acres was conducted on Wednesday, July sixteenth, to combat floodwater mosquitoes in various parts of the county. Overall mosquito larval habitats have been dying down across the county, which will result in lower adult mosquito populations over the next few weeks. One additional positive pool of West Nile virus was confirmed in Stanhope Borough. The county currently has two positive West Nile virus pools and one positive lacrosse virus pool for twenty-twenty-five. Disease Surveillance, the Office of Mosquito Control has submitted two-hundred-and-eighteen pools of adult mosquitoes for the testing of West Nile virus, Eastern Equine, Equine, Equinine, and, thank you, encephalitis, Jamestown Canyon virus, St. Louis encephalitis, and lacrosse virus. The Office of Mosquito Control has set and collected over eight-hundred-and-thirty mosquito traps and has identified over a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand adult mosquitoes to species. Public Outreach, the Mosquito Control Tabletop Display will be set up in Frankfurt and Sandistown Municipal Buildings from August eleventh through the twenty-fifth. The mosquito display will be showcased in the foyer of the municipal buildings and will have the informative Mosquito Control and Biology brochures and pamphlets for our residents. The Spotted Fly, the Spotted Lantern Fly program is, traps are still available to all Sussex County residents. If residents would like to receive their free traps, please contact the Office of Mosquito Control at nine-seven-three nine-four-zero five-two-two-five to schedule pickup. Traps can be picked up at the Mosquito Control Office on Monday through Friday from eight to four-thirty, but scheduling an appointment is preferred to ensure staffing availability. And the last two weeks, the last two weeks have been fairly quiet for me outside of having meetings. We had our first meeting of the website committee. We will be revamping our current site, which is not easy to navigate, to a more user-friendly platform. This project was originally planned two years ago and has finally begun, and I'm hoping that it will be finished by the end of the year and Christina Marx is sitting on that committee with me. And we had a very good meeting. We have lots of great ideas and I can't wait to see this come to head. Tomorrow at four-thirty is the ribbon cutting of the mobile health clinic at the Sussex County Public Health Nursing. The new mobile clinic is designed to increase access to essential health services for Sussex County residents, especially in underserved and rural areas. This innovative unit will provide immunizations, health screenings, health education, chronic disease support, and emergency preparedness outreach, right where people need it most. We were able to fund this through the American Rescue Plan Act and I look forward to attending that tomorrow. That's all I have.
All right, Department of Engineering and Planning. Sussex County has been working with the New Jersey Transportation Planning Authority since June of twenty-three to develop a local safety action plan. The plan will help the county prioritize safety improvements along Sussex County roads to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes with a future goal of zero serious injuries and fatalities. Development of the plan was managed by the Transportation Planning Authority. The Authority hired a subject matter expert to assist with development of the plan. The county will consider the plan while prioritizing safety improvements along Sussex County roads, development of a plan including a significant outreach component requesting input from the public, local municipality officials, law enforcement, emergency responders, and a variety of other interested parties. Final plan was released by the Planning Authority earlier this month. Over the next few months, county staff will be reviewing the plan and providing a recommendation to this Board on how the plan might be implemented within Sussex County. It is anticipated that the Commissioners will take formal action during an upcoming meeting to adopt the plan for implement, implementation by the county. Once adopted, the plan will be posted to Sussex County website and the plan will be periodically reviewed to both evaluate results of the strategies employed and identify recommendations for future updates of the plan. The safety of county routes remains a high priority for this Board and the Department of Engineering and Planning is available to discuss the plan or receive information on operational safety concerns within the system of the county routes. The Department can be reached at nine-seven-three five-seven-nine zero-four-three-zero or by email at dpw@sussex nj.us. Sussex County Trail Grants Program, Division of Planning is compiling information that will be used to develop the next Sussex County Trails Grant Program solicitation. Over the next few months, Division efforts will focus on seeking input from the municipalities on prospective grant projects. Additionally, Division will be working with the Open Space Committee to review the current program rules and identify potential updates. The information will be provided to the Open Space Committee and this Board for final review and recommendations. Upon final review by this Board, the documents for the next Sussex County Trails Grant Program will be finalized and the Sussex County is targeting and released of the program details to coincide with the upcoming fiscal year twenty-six budget process. The Division of Planning is also available and can be reached at nine-seven-three five-seven-nine zero-five-hundred. I just want to bring up a couple things. Yes, August seventh. August seventh, Ron, myself, and maybe Jack, just because you're on the NJTPA, we, we got a, a call or an email, I should say, from the Byram Mayor. If you guys have been attending our meetings or paying attention, two-oh-six in Andover, going, right, right, in, in Andover, right? They're redoing that covert, which is, is rather long. It's underneath the lack of want to cut. It's going to cause, it's supposed to be nine months, I think, the last time we heard. It was a nine-month job. It's going to cause major traffic in that vicinity. So we're going to have a meeting. They're, they're just, this just sparked up another conversation. Yeah, exactly. I don't know what you said, but I'm thinking, yeah, we just had fifteen, we just had eighty, now we're going to have two-oh-six. I mean, I, it's nice to live in the Northwest, you know, I, I wouldn't change it for the world, you know, especially when I drive three hours a day usually, but it's going to be a little bit of a nightmare. So any information that I get, I'll be relaying to all you guys. I know Bruce will probably be on a little bit. So that's August seventh with that meeting with the D O T, figuring out when that's going to happen, but it's, it's, it's not going to be good. And then we, when we have Route fifteen, actually, Mayor O'Leary brought up, that's going to start in October. So you're going to have fifteen. I, I wouldn't imagine that two-oh-six is going to start anytime soon, but headache after headache. Just kudos real quick to Christine Florio with Social Services and the Health Department. This last week, I, I was off the week prior, I was on vacation, apologize for missing that meeting. Everybody needs a vacation once in a while. But Social Services, they do just a good job and I just want to make sure that they get recognized. I had a constituent reach out, a friend of mine who reached out actually for a friend of hers that's in some dire need to help, and the next day Christine and, and company reached out and are going to help that individual that has some kids and a deadbeat husband with whatever they can do. So I appreciate that. And as it comes to businesses with the Health Department, you know, sometimes people think that the county's a pain in the butt. See, I said that. But we're, we're always there to help and they're doing their best they can to help out a, a couple businesses that are trying to get upstart and, and not waste all their money. So I appreciate that as well. And that's all I have. All right, number eleven, approval of the consent agenda? There is none. Number twelve, approval minutes, there's table two, August twentieth. Number thirteen, ordinance, there's nothing additional. And we had fourteen appointments and resignations, there are none. Resolutions, fifteen. All right, can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through I?
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, Commissioner Henderson seconds, any discussion? Roll call please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent.
All right, sixteen, awards of contract change orders and bid. Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders, bids, consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is and will further the public interest. Motion to adopt resolutions A and B.
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson, you have a second.
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden, absent.
Okay. Number seventeen, financial, we have the payment of bills from July, July, what's that? Please. From July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space?
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden, absent.
Number eighteen, personnel, there is none. Number nineteen, administrative report, Ron, you're up.
Thank you, sir. Yes, real quick, I attended the statewide executive management meeting last week and we approved a claim that I had abstained from, but it was a claim from the Elections Board, they had water damage to their election equipment this year. We approved the funding to replace those four machines at, at that men, meeting under the insurance with some twenty-one thousand bucks that was approved for that. And we've also, as the county entity, we get grants through our state fund. We've applied for a thirty-one thousand dollar grant to reimburse us on safety initiatives that we've already put in and we can get those reimbursed through, through the plan. So we put that application in as well. I attended the NJAC Administrators Meeting this past week and it was a lot of focus on legislation that's going to be looked at this week. It's A fifty-nine oh-three and it's, it's in a revision to the statute that controls the state health benefit program. That legislation is looking to change the, the process in which those of us that are not in the plan, like us, that were, were premium-based, that if our premiums should get as equal to the state plan or higher, we then have to go back and review our plans and make options and negotiations to offer those state plans to our people. And it also limits our ability to negotiate seven, chapter seventy-eight, which we do not want to touch. So this, a lot of this legislation is not good. John Donadio is testifying tomorrow on this legislation so that, that it protects those of us that are, quite frankly, doing the right thing. So I'll keep you up to date on that. And last-
We should just note that we don't get health insurance on this board.
No, none of you here, this is not about the board, this is about the six-hundred-and-sixty employees we have that have health and care insurance. And the county has done a very good job negotiating premium plans on our, on our own behalf through our broker to keep those premiums down and keep those cost escalators up. The state healthcare plan, other, as, as it's been over the years, those municipalities and, and counties that had real bad claims, that was the only place they could go. They couldn't get insurance and now they, they, somebody's got to pay it eventually and it, and it, and it's coming up now. So this legislation's got some very bad tentacles to it, to those people that have managed their, their processes. So we're going to be very focused on that. And lastly, our facilities group has been working like crazy this year. Did a year-end work order analysis last year and committed, this is the half, as of June, year-to-date, they've completed twenty-one hundred and thirty-seven work orders and completed seven-hundred-and-eight preventive maintenance jobs. So they've been extremely busy and extremely busy the last two weeks on air conditioners. I don't know of an air conditioner we got that's not working right, so. Yeah, well, it was. So anyway, we're, we're constantly working on that and we're prioritizing it. I know some people are unhappy with us that we haven't got to them yet, but we had to keep operations, daily operations going. We had to keep the, what constituents come in to do, we had to keep those going first and we'll continue to work on the rest of them as we get going. That's all I have. Thank you.
Just a quick question regarding the voter boxes, is that an insurance claim?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, yeah, what happened, we had, if you remember in the spring, we were getting 30-degree nights and 62-degree afternoons, and we had a boiler valve that just bust because they couldn't take that. We had our voting machines stored in one of the offices back in the Cochran Building that we don't own, we lease it, and it damaged four of the machines, so that was, that's where we put it in for the claim. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, 28, County Council, you go.
Thank you for having me this evening, and I have nothing to report.
All right, any unfinished, 21, unfinished business, anyone? All right, new business, anyone? I just have, just real quick, new business. I looked at, since we've been away and on vacation, it seemed like everybody was on vacation, it was like the perfect storm of everybody being on vacation, no one in charge. I just, I came up with an idea, a policy, and there is a policy that's set, but it's just old, it's outdated. When the policy was written, we didn't have a deputy administrator, now we have a deputy administrator, so I proposed a chain of command that Christina will send to you guys. It's just basically a, maybe a six-step chain of command, so obviously Ron, the deputy, and so on and so forth.
It's title-based.
It's, right, it's title-based, exactly, so just look over the title, if you guys are good with it, then we could put it on the next month's meeting agenda, and then just set that policy. That way, we know who's in charge, something happens, like I was here, and there was a little confusion on who was in charge and whatnot, and listen, everybody has a right to have a sick day and vacation and so on and so forth, but we need to make sure we have somebody in charge in case something happens, so we'll get that all to you guys. All right, anybody else, that was it, good, all right. 23, public session from the floor. This public session, for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics, please line up at the microphone, state your name and municipality for the record. Motion to open a floor for public comment.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space and Commissioner Henderson seconds. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, carries. The floor is open.
Ken Collins, Andover Township. A democratic republic is a form of government that blends principles of both democracy and a republic. In a republic, which typically features an elected head of state, supreme power rests with the people and their elected representatives. Democracy signifies a rule by the people, where the population have a say in their governance through elected representatives. In a democratic republic, the people hold the power, but they elect representatives to govern on their behalf. The government's power derives from the people, it combines elements of both direct democracy and representative democracy. Key characteristics include respect for human rights, fair elections, a multi-party system, rule of law, and citizen participation. The United States is supposed to operate as a constitutional federal republic that incorporates elements of both direct and representative democracy, commonly known as a democratic republic. It's a form of government that operates on principles adopted from a republic and a democracy. It is not, as many of you may desire, a republican democracy, it's a democratic republic. With the second term of Donald Trump, our current form of governments is now leaning towards fascism, a far-right authoritarian ultra-nationalist political ideology characterized by a dictatorial leader, centralized autocracy, militarism, forcible suppression of opposition, belief in a natural social hierarchy, subordination of individual interests for the perceived interests of the nation, and strong regimentation of society and the economy. The word fascism was coined by the father of fascism, Italian dictator Benito Mussolini. Fascist regimes are typically led by a single-decked dictator like Donald Trump, or a small group that holds absolute power. Fascism emphasizes intense national pride and loyalty, often promoting the idea of national superiority and a desire for expansion, as illustrated by the Trump administration's push to annex Canada and Greenland. Fascist states use violence, intimidation, and propaganda to silence dissent and eliminate political opponents, and we see the Trump administration and you guys doing these things regularly. Fascism involves significant state control over the economy, media, and other aspects of society. Fascist movements often center around a charismatic leader like Donald Trump, who is seen as the embodiment of the nation. Fascism often relies on myth, emotion, and irrationality rather than logic and reason. While it shares some characteristics with socialism, it is fundamentally different in its emphasis on nationalism and its rejection of internationalism, as exhibited by the Trump administration's actions and policies. Elements of fascist ideology exhibited by the Trump administration include nationalism, authoritarianism, and the scapegoating of minority groups, core elements of Trump administration policy. Understanding fascism is crucial for recognizing its potential dangers and resisting its harmful effects on society. Donald Trump is a fascist, and if you support Donald Trump, you support a fascist government in the United States of America. All of you support a fascist America.
Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township. Good evening, everybody. Commissioner Hayden had told us to be patient, and there would be an indictment coming down. While he was correct, an indictment did come down, it was not against you commissioners, though, it was against him for stolen valor tax fraud. Although he takes this as a joke, this is a very serious charge with penalties up to three to five years in jail and up to $15,000 in fines. Hayden and his lawyer claim that $382 is totally insignificant. The point is, he broke the law, whether it be $382 or a dollar, he broke the law. This is a terrible crime, and this offends everyone, and particularly people who have served in the military. A strong apology and resignation would have been the expected result, however, he is incapable of either. I urge the commissioners to immediately start the process of trying to start suspension proceedings. You need to prove to the county, the state, and the country that Sussex County does not tolerate such behavior, and this is not who we are or who we want to be. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Gail Just, and I'm from Leighton, so I'd like to comment on Ken here. When I told him earlier, I love his shirt, but I don't like his other ideas, I in turn love President Trump and would support him whatever he does, because I think he's doing the best regarding immigration and all the other services that he's doing, making our country a whole lot safer. The other thing that I always talk about here is your fellow Commissioner Bill Hayden. When you read in the newspaper that they found him and they indicted him for one count of tax evasion, that's not actually true. I'm the one who turned him into the tax people, and I turned him in for four different times where he put on his taxes that he was a veteran, four different years he was a veteran. However, due to the lack of the enforcement from the tax people, three of those had expired, so he was only indicted on the one tax fraud for the, I think it was a $6,000 elimination or whatever that he took advantage of, which was $382. But that's not, that's not actually the problem, the problem is that people who do that and they take veteran status on their taxes and are not veterans hurt all the other veterans who are in the country and who have proudly displayed their service to the country, and people like Hayden who work off the veteran status and expect people like Lowe's and Home Depot to give him the 10% for he is a veteran, and he's not, he never was, he never was a veteran, never served a day, never was on SEAL Team Six. So, it took the criminal justice to do...
One minute.
It took criminal justice over a year to do their investigation, and they contacted every branch of the service, Army, Navy, Air Force, so on and so forth, with the subpoena to guarantee that indeed he never was a veteran, so all those lies he told that all the people believed, none of it is true. So, I am so glad he was finally indicted, thank you very, oh, by the way, he makes 24, everyone should know, he makes $24,000 a year to sit over there, and he hasn't been here for six meetings, therefore, he has cheated the county out of all that money, everyone should pay attention to that, he shouldn't be on the board anymore. Thank you, and I had 20 seconds left.
Good evening, Linda D. Witt from Hampton Township. Find a better alternative. Recently, your board implemented a new permit process that will change the way Newton Green is used now and in the future. Newton Green has a long tradition as a place for political discourse and demonstrations where people's voices have been heard. The marker on the green erected in 2000 by the freeholders calls the green "a birthplace of democracy." The new process has already led to the relocation of the Fourth of July reading of the Declaration of Independence from Newton Green to the VFW. Previously, public events held at the green required advanced notification to the county, but not insurance. Now, all organizations, regardless of size or type, must obtain permits that prove proof of commercial, general liability, and automobile insurance. It does not matter whether an event is expected to have 100 people or a dozen, or whether event includes any equipment or not. Newton Green has always been a gathering place for people. This is a place where 25 people came to light candles following the mass shooting in Las Vegas just to find solace, and where people came for the largest rally in the county after George Floyd's death in 2020 to a Black Lives Matter event, which two of the county freeholders attended, Dawn Fantasia and Sylvia Patello. After the Black Lives Rally, the county freeholders issued a press release, including a section about peaceful gatherings. In the press release, Dawn Fantasia says she supports all applications for peaceful assembly within the county, and Sylvia Patello said at the rallies, she saw many signs, but one sign that particularly touched her stated, "We are better together." I understand that your new permit may be necessary for some events, and many groups can easily meet the requirements, but for those who cannot, you are taking away what the green represents for our community.
One minute.
Effectively disenfranchising many groups that wish to gather for grieving, celebrating, or exercising free speech. No one wants to see groups coming to the green without notifying the county first so that proper security can be in place. The recent Snoke rally on June 14th was a great success, and next year, the reading of the Declaration of Independence should be held on the green where it belongs. So, tonight, I beg you to change your new permit and be fair to all your constituents, and let the marker in the park, "a birthplace of democracy," live up to its meaning. Thank you, we are better together.
Hello, my name is Richard Schnur, and I reside in Hardeston Township, and I am a real veteran, unlike... ...soul valor to be elected to this position, continues to keep his role in a trusted elected position, and has clearly been indicted for stolen valor, and I think that he should resign, or something should be done to have him removed from the board, because we all know that he has stolen valor. I asked the board if you all are able to do something to have him removed, it's been two and a half years that he's been sitting, that we're not even sitting in the seat. I've looked, I've seen nothing about him that he's contributed to this county, I've seen only bad things about him claiming to be a veteran, he's not a veteran, and I find that very disgraceful, disgusted by it. So, many of you have already clearly distanced yourself from him, and I would like to make sure that something is done, and he shouldn't be able to sit on the board. And also, if you're going to claim to be a veteran, you certainly don't want to be calling yourself a Navy SEAL, let me tell you. So, I also would like to thank the many veterans that I see in this room for your support, thank you for your service. So, it's time for him to move on, and I will continue to organize veteran support to ensure justice for the Attorney General, to have him indicted, to have him convicted. This is wrong, he should face the, all five years, and also the financial penalty for what he's done, and his attitude of LOL as a comment for the newspaper that reached out to him about the indictment, he finds this funny. I don't think anybody in this room or in our county finds this funny.
One minute.
I would also like to suggest that maybe he take a different role and write novels about being a Navy SEAL instead of trying to be a commissioner, so, thank you very much for your time, and thank you all.
Thank you for your service.
Hi, my name is Victoria Neller, and the whole, sorry with my speeches, I was, I couldn't talk at all for about...
So, if you have a feedback...
I have a elephant for a good, nice things. Helped me when I was very... My dad was... My husband's... Very important, they can't lie about people, neighbors in my community tell me they're, excuse me, I don't know the words, I'm sorry, they're mad, they're mad about this. They're, they're, they love Trump, but they don't like this guy at all, it's horrible. So, they love me, I'm not different, I'm a Democrat, but they made sure I had walking and talking and meet my dog, and we don't have family, my husband and I don't have family, or just talk, and people work for me and help and have friendship, no matter what. This is not bad, this is a man, bad person, you can't do that to the people. There's, they are, he is not doing a good job for veterans at all, and we're the United States, we should be everybody, no matter what. I'm embarrassed about this. I'm embarrassed, the United States, or county, and the... The green is also a bad thing, that's also bad. We're be all together, our rights and privileges, and this guy is no, he's a bad person. Do something right for my grandfather and fathers, they're women now, it's not good at all. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, David D. Witt from Hampton Township. You might ask why I continue to come here and rant when I know very well there's little you could do about some of the topics I discuss. I feel it's my civic duty and need, indeed, I believe it's everybody's civic duty, when you see crimes committed, you need to speak up. It's our moral responsibility to speak when crimes are being committed by our dear leader daily. I've spoken about some of them before, let's review them quickly. Extortion, this is one of the orange man's favorite tactics. He presses and squeezes universities, law firms, even CBS Television, threatening them with all kinds of dire consequences if they don't toe the line. Sadly, most have caved. Bribery, when have you ever heard of a president accepting a $400 million flying palace airplane as a gift, only to give it to us to fix it up for him to own with a billion-dollar price tag? Theft, it's been said some people steal with a six-gun, and some people steal with a fountain pen. This is certainly an apt definition of how Donald Trump does business. He stole from his own charitable foundation. His entire empire was built on financial lies and manipulation, stealing tax revenues from New York State. He stole boxes of documents from our government archives, Trump University, golden sneakers and bibles, crypto coins, worthless playing cards, it's all a hustle and a scam. But the dear leader's personal dishonesty and criminal behavior is not bad enough. He has corrupted the Republicans in Congress and turned them into a rubber-stamped chorus of quislings and ass kissers. His big ugly bill was a tax bill constructed with cuts in spending that would allow it to be pushed through with no chance of failure. The sole purpose of this bill was not to reform our government, it was not to eliminate waste tax, waste fraud and abuse, excuse me, it was to reduce the budget enough so that the tax breaks for the rich would continue. Those that thought it would balance the budget were shocked that it would leave us trillions more in debt. It has been characterized as the biggest transfer of wealth from the poor to the rich ever. People will unnecessarily die as a consequence as it is implemented. But the worst mortal sin was the gleeful erasure of USAID. I did an AI search of the consequences. Brooks Nichols of Boston U.S. University, a professor of medical modeling, calculated that by June, which is already passed, over 300,000 would be dead from the way they went about discontinuing this agency. Over 200,000 of them were children. The Lancet estimates 14 million.
Hi, Chris Panico from Wantage, New Jersey. Last time I got up and spoke, you asked that I send my questions and emails to you all, which I did, back on June thirteenth.
What was your name, son?
Chris Panico.
I'm just, I'm not so sure I have it.
Can I resend it, or I can leave you one? Hard copy?
Leave the hard copy, yeah.
I'll do both.
Sir. Thank you. I apologize for not getting that, but everything that gets given goes right up here. Sorry. Is that it? That was it? Okay. Anyone else?
I just have to say, there's always Sandy Hall late in New Jersey, always so much divisiveness.
Could you state your name for the record?
Sandy Hall, H-U-L-L. You know, a lot of talk. I mean, I am a Democrat, but you know, you guys are all Republicans, and I hate the divisiveness that goes on here sometimes. But I just have to say, you know, our president called people in the military suckers and losers. So to my husband, who's a Marine Corps veteran, and to all the other veterans here, let me say I apologize for that crass and inconsiderate remark. And for people who support him, I want you to think about that. Suckers and losers? The friends I lost in Vietnam, the people we lost in all these other conflicts and around the world, you really got to think sometimes about where your loyalties are and the issues that you really truly believe in. And I'm asking you, Republicans, Democrats, Libertarians, everyone, don't be partisan stupid. Think about yourselves and think about these issues, and how what you do reflects in your actions, and how they reflect those of us who trust you to do the right thing. Thank you.
John Snyder, Sanderson Township. There's been a lot of talk today about veterans, fair, senior citizens, the senior... What is it?
Senior Day at the Fair?
No, also in the county, the senior social, whatever. But at the fair, for a long time, veterans were admitted free every day of the fair. This is either the third, maybe the fourth year now, where one day, it's either Wednesday or Thursday, free. I know you have no direct control over the fair, but I think people should know that not everybody in the county is really supportive of veterans. I happened to mention that last year, coming out of the county building, because right there was the veterans' table, they were from Vaughan, heel coating. So I started to complain to them, and he says, "I agree with you a hundred percent." He said, "It's unbelievable what they've been doing." Sure, some of you today have heard the news from the Director of National Intelligence, Tulsi Gabbard, that she has started an investigation into the manipulation that happened to Donald Trump way back in two thousand and sixteen. There's a criminal investigation that they rejected in intelligence report that indicated there was no Russian interference in the election. That wasn't what they wanted to hear. So at that time, President Obama directed another report to come out, which was apparently false. Hopefully, these people are going to be brought to justice. Barack Obama, James Clapper, John Brennan, James Comey, and even I mentioned Andrew McCabe. Unbelievable, but a lot of us thought...
One minute.
...back at that time, what was going on, and apparently, we were right. It was a big fake. How much money and time was wasted? All those investigations, and of course, it's just in memory, I guess, now, history. My opinion is disgusting, that we had a president from two thousand and nine, I guess, to two thousand and seventeen, who thought there were fifty-seven states in this country. Didn't even know how many states there were, and he got elected president. Thank you.
Sandy Pender, Freedon Township. I work with youth, and I tell them, and my own children, the company you keep matters. The people you hang out with can have a profound impact. The people around you can build you up, or they can bring you down. The people you surround yourself with can also be a basis for judgment based on association. The company you keep matters. We have a consequential gubernatorial election coming up in New Jersey. The main players are Mikey Sherrill and Jack Chittirelli. Chittirelli, who once called Trump a charlatan who is not fit for the Oval Office, a few months ago flew to Bedminster to meet with Trump and kiss the ring. Another Republican candidate also sought Trump's endorsement at that time, but in the end, Trump endorsed Chittirelli. The company you keep matters. The Trump administration has made massive cuts to education, Medicaid, food assistance, and human services. Chittirelli will not be able to give New Jersey residents any monetary relief, because these federal funding cuts will need to somehow be made up by our state. And does anyone truly think that Chittirelli will govern New Jersey independently based on its constituents? He is already fully aligned with Trump. New Jersey will not be governed effectively with a puppet for a governor. The company you keep matters. So you may ask, why am I bringing this up again when this is outside of the commissioner's jurisdiction? U.S. county commissioners may not have much leverage with politics on a federal or a state level, but we all have the ability to act. We all have agency and a responsibility to take courageous action. Having a leadership role puts you all in a unique position of being able to guide fellow citizens and lead by example.
One minute.
So I ask you, have you taken action to speak to others about the direction and governing of our country and state? Have you reached out to leaders and officials to express the concerns of your constituents? At some point, the crap is going to hit the fan here in Sussex County. These cuts are going to become very real very soon, and people are going to look to local leaders. I am asking you to please consider what is coming for Sussex County, and to do what you can now within the range and your abilities. Thank you.
I just want to tilt the microphone down.
I'm too short.
That's right, thanks.
Thank you. Debbie Mellow, Freedon Township. As some other people have said this evening, when we look at the First Amendment, the First Amendment prevents Congress from making laws respecting an establishment of religion, prohibiting the free exercise of religion, or abridging the freedom of speech, the freedom of press, the freedom of assembly, or the right to petition the government for redress of grievances. This is a simple and straightforward statement. There are no conditions or codicils that are attached to this statement. In other words, it doesn't say that to assemble at the Newton Green or anywhere else in the U.S. requires insurance coverage, including automobile insurance. Last Thursday, I participated in a peaceful rally in Morris Township. We were invited to assemble on the front lawn of the municipal building, which offered more shade than the ball field that we were originally meant to organize. Once people began to assemble, the police closed the road to traffic. When we asked why, the police said it was for our safety. That police action rendered us benign. Our signs and the chants were not shared with people in the community who typically would have passed by the municipal building. These kinds of things change the whole character of freedom of assembly and freedom of speech. And of course, we go on. There are so many to talk about. One that I'm particularly upset about is the cancellation of the Late Show with Stephen Colbert. Really? Suppressing free speech in order to seal the deal and bend the knee to the president. I really don't like this. Even LBJ said that it's good to be able to laugh at yourself when you're a public persona. Finally, on June fourteenth, ICE agents detained Mario Cueva, an Emmy Award-winning Spanish-language journalist while he was reporting on a No King's Day protest in Atlanta. Cueva is a legal resident of the United States. The charges have been dropped, but he is still in custody. These acts do not reflect our rights as written in the First Amendment, ones that I think as I was growing up, I took, you know, I kind of took for granted, but I'm obviously rethinking that now. There are many more even happening here in Sussex County. When can we expect an end to these conditions that are just really being very hard on all of our rights? And I hope that we can all find consensus and find ways to make that a reality.
Time.
Thank you.
I was thinking of you all this week as I read the news focusing on members of this commissioner's panel, and I was wondering what your thoughts are on your roles as leaders in our county. As you are well aware, I have attended most of your meetings this year, and it has been extremely educational, and I'm grateful for your time. In my attendance, though, I have noticed the lack of responses you have given your constituents' concerns, and have on more than one occasion heard members of the board use terms like "we are a Republican county" or "she is a liberal," which really led me to think about the qualities that make someone a good leader. In my experience, true leadership is about uniting people, not dividing them, and when our elected officials, whether local or national, choose to label, separate, and pit Republicans against Democrats or liberals against conservatives, they betray the very spirit of public service. That kind of divisive language may win headlines, but it weakens our communities. It becomes a wall instead of a bridge. The questions I have heard over the past six months from people here include concerns regarding feeding local children, supporting assisted living programs, concerns over library funding, Social Security, Medicaid, and Medicare cuts, concerns about our local parks losing their funding, the public's right to freely use the Newton Green, and many others. These concerns deserve your respect and your response. I feel a simple statement of recognition, even given towards a topic of which may you have no jurisdiction, is part of unifying the county you have been elected to serve. It is interesting to me that you spend a lot of time each meeting telling us what you have done, but no time asking the neighbors present what their concerns are, or why it was important for them to talk to you personally about things you might not know occurring in their towns. As our representatives, I urge you to lead with the unity and integrity this county deserves. As a time for change comes nearer, I urge you to each think about whether you are clearly seeing how diverse the community of Sussex County is, once you are not enclosed in your own echo chamber. As a lifelong resident of this county, I am seeing more and more frequently how this new and growing diversity in our area is making us better informed citizens and community members. Good leaders should want that. Do you? I often leave these meetings thinking you would much prefer it if we all simply stayed home and let you remain unaware and uninformed of our concerns, rather than bringing them to you in order to educate you about them, and look to you for your thoughts, your opinions, and your ideas of how to move our county forward in challenging times. It concerns me that I leave each meeting thinking that way, and I truly hope it concerns you as well.
Shelby Ann Allen, Hardeston. Wow. I want to thank most of the people. I want to thank you for listening to us tonight. I hope that you're really listening to us tonight. I want to thank most of the people that came tonight to speak, to share their concerns. The fact that Bill Hayden is not here speaks volumes. I don't even anticipate him showing up for the rest of this year. If you have integrity and you understand what they're talking about as veterans, someone that stands up for the president yet wants the veterans taken care of, that's a different story. You're not going to get that. However, please understand that him being part of this is divisive. It helps us not focus on the things that are supposed to be going on in this county, helping folks that need your help as well as all of ours. It's another five months. Let him go. Let him go. Whatever he's going to do, let him go. Appoint somebody to take that spot. It will rest the folks here, it'll understand that you understand that the law is important, that he broke the law, an indictment, it's indictment. He's got to go. Release the Epstein files. You don't have anything to do with that. I just need to say that out loud. The Congress is... Congress is going home so they can avoid any vote on any of that. It's ridiculous. They should vote, they should give the Democrats a chance to use their voice, just like they always get a chance to use theirs when the Democrats are in power. Again, nothing you can do, but I needed to get that out. I sit here with my heart racing and wondering, why? Why is this happening to all of us? You are going down with all of us, just as it's happening.
One minute.
Mr. Henderson wants to reopen that jail. I pray, and I'm not a prayer, but I pray it isn't because you want to turn it into detention center. I really hope that that's not the ultimate goal, to have one in here in Sussex County. People are terrified. I talk to a lot of Hispanic people, I tell them that they need help. Come to me, I will direct you to someone that can legally help you. But they are terrified to come out of their homes, to walk on the street. Imagine living like that every day, just because you're living your life. I talked to a man today, I've been here twenty-five years, I thought, you have brown skin? You are not safe. Look over your shoulder every minute of the day. Please, help these people that are here and need our help. We need him to resign. People, keep showing up to the rallies, keep using your voice. We are going to win this. Thank you.
Good evening. Heather Gonzalez, Wantage. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I'll tell you what, I'm really moved by the courage in this room of some of the people who did get up to speak. I just want to say thank you to the veterans in the room. My husband is military, so I know quite well what comes along with being separated as a family and raising my children as a single parent for months on end. I, you know, I'm leaving here with some frustration tonight, but I'm also leaving here with a lot of hope, because while I've only been to a couple meetings, it does really feel like we are united in some ways in this room that we have not been in the past. And to the woman with the Trump shoes, still here, who liked Mr. Collins' shirt, I have to say that I don't love her Trump shoes, but I did like some of what she said about Mr. Hayden as well. I cannot help but notice the parallels between this room uniting against Commissioner Hayden and his atrocious show of who he really is, right? When someone shows you who they are, believe them. And some of what is happening at our federal administrative level. When someone shows you who they are, believe them. In the first meeting that I came to here, Mr. Henderson said that he does what he knows is right in his heart. And Mr. Henderson, you know, I make a lot of eye contact with you in the meeting, and I believe that. In your heart, you know what's wrong, okay? A lot of us do. Optics are really important. You're leaders of this community, and what you do matters. So thank you for hearing us each week.
One minute.
Thank you for considering what I have to say. like we are united in some ways in this room that we have not been in the past. And to the woman with the Trump shoes, still here, who liked Mr. Collins' shirt, I have to say that I don't love her Trump shoes, but I did like some of what she said about Mr. Hayden as well. I cannot help but notice the parallels between this room uniting against Commissioner Hayden and his atrocious show of who he really is, right? When someone shows you who they are, believe them. And some of what is happening at our federal administrative level. When someone shows you who they are, believe them. In the first meeting that I came to here, Mr. Henderson said that he does what he knows is right in his heart. And Mr. Henderson, you know, I make a lot of eye contact with you in the meeting, and I believe that. In your heart, you know what's wrong, okay? A lot of us do. Optics are really important. You're leaders of this community, and what you do matters. So thank you for hearing us each week.
One minute.
Thank you for considering what I have to say.
There are many ways to demonstrate your commitment to America without ever wearing a uniform. You can vote, that's the minimal effort. You can run for public office and take on that responsibility. You can come to meetings and share your opinions, however, they may not be the consensus. So there are many ways to be patriotic, to be committed, without again, ever wearing a uniform. That being said, people who did wear that uniform implies a very special commitment. And anyone who puts on that uniform metaphorically without ever wearing it for real is beneath contempt. In the words of the always eloquent Kathy Brennan Hughes, this is not who we are. And one of the minimum commitments to America is obey the law. I don't care if it was $300 or 3 cents, you obey the law. And the fact that he would, that an individual would continue this outrageous lie to save $300, I think says it all. If you're at the dew drop in and you want to brag about scoring a winning touchdown at a football game when you were merely the water boy, or if you want to be the king of the prom, or if you want to be.
One minute.
The indispensable cog in your job, that's one thing. But you don't lie about military service. Again, this is not who we are. Thank you.
Motion for the floor to comment.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Henderson, Mr. Good seconds, in discussion. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Before we, I read my reminders, I'm going to read something. I wasn't going to read it, I'm going to read it. This was a correspondence. It was a correspondence from the woman who was going to read the Declaration on the Green. Get it out, Ken. This is her words, not my words. People who never spoke to me are quoting things I never said. I never spoke at iHeartRadio. I never complained or made any accusations against the county, the commissioners, or otherwise. I only called the Herald to see if we could move the event. Would they help us get the word out? I know Bruce is a pot stirrer. I made no accusations against anyone. I told the attendees after reading that the county had done everything they could to make this event happen. They saw a need to put the insurance requirement in place, and they had every right to do so. I chose to move the event. I specifically stated that no one was trying to block us. No one was stepping on our First Amendment rights. It was my choice. My choice wasn't based on money, as we had an anonymous donor. My decision was made on the possibility of personal liability as a town of 3.38 square miles with the size of the police department they have, and they can't get a grip on vagrants, alcoholics, and open to blatant drug use on the Green. We wouldn't be able to ask the abusers to leave, and I wasn't comfortable with them being there. We actually discussed that it would be in our own best interest to have insurance after witnessing the Juneteenth and No King's events, the town and the county allowed. Clearly outsiders buzzed in. I witnessed the buses. That is just a bad situation waiting to happen. Talk about something getting all blown out of proportion. It continued on, but there's names in here that I'm not going to read, so. That was her letter from us. That's her words, not ours. So, as we said in the past, we charge insurance as every other town. I sat in a Parks Commission chair. Every, every entity, whether it be football, soccer, lacrosse, they all have to show every park their insurance, and that's all we're asking. Doesn't matter who you are, doesn't matter if you're Republican or Democrat, Libertarian, we're just asking everybody to be equal for their own safety, for the county's safety, for Newton's safety. That's what it's about. We're not trying to block anybody's First Amendment right. That's all I have. All right. Twenty-four. Reminders, please check the county's website, www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. The New Jersey Fair, as Commissioner Deputy Director Space said, begins next Friday, August 1st. Please check their website for scheduled events, and please consider making a donation there. There's going to be, as I said at last meeting, there's three beneficiaries, it's us, Benny's Bodega. Guys, can you just maybe not talk until I'm done? Thank you. Us, Benny's Bodega, and I think the Veterans Cemetery?
Oh, yeah.
Veterans Cemetery. So there's a monetary donation, if you guys can make it, that'd be great. We appreciate everything you can do. Number twenty-five, adjournment, motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. Deputy Director Space. Second is Commissioner Henderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, staying carries. Meeting is adjourned, seven.
Thirty-eight.
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 Oh, can you hold on one second, ma'am? Ma'am? Ma'am?